Well, we'll call the meeting to order. This is our July 24 regular meeting. And want to welcome all of our guests here this evening. And we'll start off with an invocation. Kelly, will you do the invocation? And Donna, would you mind leading us in the Pledge Allegiance?
Okay.
All right. Everybody please stand.
If you'll join me. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the many blessings that you give us, Lord. And I just thank you for Greenbrier County and the citizens here, Lord. I ask that you will continue to help us prosper and to help this county to achieve more and more, Lord. I ask that you will look over us this evening and that our business will be conducted to honor you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Donna. First is to approve the minutes of the July 10 2018 regular meeting. Does there need any amendment or do you ready to offer a motion?
Probably the way you approved the minutes as presented.
It's been moved. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, settlements of the states from Jenny Hare, our fiduciary supervisor.
On behalf of Jenny Hare, the fiduciary supervisor, I have seven names to present. Grace, Olina, Holly, Darnell, Janet, June Lewis, James Allen Mansfile, James Edward Martin, Evelyn Frances Murphy, Anna Frances Pucey, and Gracie Ellen White. And those are all in order.
Okay, I would move that we approve the settlements of the states. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Exonerations, county splits, consolidations from our assessor, Mr. Joe Darnell. I have those here in front of me. I would move that we approve them as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Financials from our clerk who is absent this evening but has sent the information.
For the arts and rec transfer, we only have one tonight, and that's $862.72. That is for the Central Greenbrier Little League for the 17-18 supplies.
Okay, I would move that we take $862.72 from savings to checking to pay this arts and rec bill. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Budget revisions?
I have four of those, and they're all from the sheriff's office. First one is to increase courthouse security overtime, 703-108, by $30. That is a overtime reimbursement for the Greenbrier County Republican Club. Law enforcement overtime, 700-108, that one's $758.86. That is overtime reimbursement from the City of Beckley on a drunk driving campaign. And, let's see, 700-108, that's law enforcement overtime in the amount of $23,992.50. That is overtime reimbursement from old white charities. That looks like it's from the golf tournament. And then we also have law enforcement automobile supplies. That's 700-343 in the amount of $9,648.32. That is for a web corp claim, our insurance on a wrecked cruiser.
Okay, motion on the budget revisions?
I move that we approve the budget revision as presented by our clerk.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Line item transfers?
There are none.
Okay, we have a stack of bills that we've all three reviewed and find them to be appropriate. So I would move that we pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Presentation, a report from the Greenbrier County Housing Authority on HUD updates. Mr. Rick Richter. And company. Do you have somebody else that's gonna speak or not?
No, I think they just came to support.
More support?
Yeah.
Okay.
They thought I needed it. The, I am here to give an update on the transfer of the Greenbrier County Housing Authority to, to the Raleigh County Housing Authority. This is something that we've been working on for, off and on for about three years now. And with HUD and the, it's the subsidy program that generally pays rents to certain qualified individuals within the county. The last, for about the last year or the last 10 months, we finally decided that we really just needed to transfer the administrative side of that to Raleigh County because of, mostly because of financial reasons. The financial slide of that program from HUD started about, probably about 10 years ago, where HUD kept playing around with the reimbursements for the administrative side of managing the program. And currently, it's, all across the U.S., it's been a problem for small housing authorities. They just don't have the critical mass to run the program. And so HUD has been trying to, they don't really acknowledge this, but they've been trying to move it in the direction of larger ones to get them where economies of scale, which is interesting in itself because 30 years ago, they did the exact opposite, trying to push it out to smaller ones. But HUD has determined that it takes about $53 and some change to manage the unit per month, a unit. And in the infinite wisdom of Congress, they only fund it at the level of about $41 per unit, which has forced all of the smaller operations to really come on hard financial times. The, by comparison, the Greenbrier County Housing Authority, which really covers Pocahontas and Monroe Counties too, has about 240 units, which translates probably into, I guess, still about 400 to 500 people at any one point in time, that when they go to sleep at night, they have a roof over their head because of that program. The, the current reimbursement rate that HUD uses, which is really driven by Congress, not HUD, is about 76% of what they say is needed in order to... Is that me?
My fault. I was told it was on, and like, it's not on.
Okay.
So I adjusted it to sound sorry.
Which is about 76...
I was just here to supervise the camera. I apologize for the disruption.
Maybe we can call HUD and get it straightened out. Which means they're reimbursing it about 76% of what it really takes to run the program. This has been a very expensive program for the last 30 years for HUD. And they suffer budget constraints just like everyone else does. The larger ones have been able to generate some of those economies of scale. For instance, like, everybody has to have an executive director, and you have to pay for that person for a small one, just like you do for a large one. Raleigh County has about six times the number of units. So they have a lot, a lot bigger base to spread that over, those costs. Same for like a financial officer and on down the line. Interestingly, in our market area, the program could probably handle double the number of units we have. But HUD has put a cap on them, so there's no way to grow the program to, you know, work out of that financial constraint. The, nationally, it's just not in favor to increase the number of people in that kind of a program. The end result is that management will be transferring to Raleigh County at the end of this month. And that's, that's from a long three years or a really intensive last 10 months of trying to move in that direction. What does that really mean? It just means that the recipients of the program, the tenants and the landlords who benefit from it, their checks will be written by Raleigh County rather than Greenbrier County. And that's, no one will lose their benefits as long as they comply with the requirements of the program. They'll still be covered. If you'll give me about another two minutes, I would, I would like to kind of recognize Bill Kraft, who is our current executive director of the, of the program, who knowingly, for the last 10 months, has continued to work through the process, even though he knew that the job was going away. He's hung in there. The same for Whitney Harris, who isn't here. She is an assistant to, to, excuse me, to Bill and has remained on board also. The, I'd like to also recognize our two remaining board members who are still there. That's Banks, Jesser, and Darrell Fulton. They've been very supportive of trying to work through this process. Another person that has continued to work on the, on the, what some of our needs is the financial person right now. On a contract basis, Sandra Neely, at way below her normal billing rate. And last but not least, I'd kind of like to recognize the Sarah organization, which I generally refer to as a sister company, which is technically incorrect. It's just, it has been associated for a long time because there was a similar executive director of both, both organizations. But with them continuing to pay their rent for the last few years has helped keep, helped pay the light bills and, and pay for the general upkeep of the place. So they, they've been a very big support. And even though Shane is a short timer in that organization, he has continued to support that operation when he had his own building next door that he could go to. So that's the, that's the gist of it, and it'll be moving at the end of July. The August payments to the landlords and tenants will be made by Raleigh County, and they've, they've been working on files. And I think they will try to do as good a job as they can to keep up the process. And they've, they've actually consolidated, I think they have six counties now. They've consolidated other housing authorities in the area. I don't know which ones, I don't remember, but they now cover about six counties.
Raleigh County does.
Yes.
Any, any questions for Mr. Richter?
No, it's a celebration there. Stay in, very good, it's kind of a chair now. Raleigh County, just like you said, is our typical, sure, one of the counties.
They've got, they've got the process down, and they have the critical mass to help survive some of it. That's not a guarantee that they will either, but... And what, and what's interesting, I mentioned it earlier, was, you know, back in the 80s, because the program, a consolidated organization by the West Virginia Housing Development Fund, was not doing well, and they weren't getting the units out and stuff. And HUD forced it to be put out into the different areas. And that's how Raleigh County came to be and the Greenbrier County Housing Authority when, when this August, August board in those days created it by ordinance of the Greenbrier County Commission.
Are any of the employees been offered work in Raleigh County?
No. The, Raleigh County, they've got the same financial constraints, and they have, they have resisted adding any employees. And in fact, they claim that they're not going to add any in order to absorb these. I'm not sure that I think that's realistic, but that's what they intend to do. Which also is to the credit of our two remain... At one time, the housing authority was up to about five staff people. Currently, it's at two, which makes it really hard to get that job done. And they've done a, a good job considering the constraints they have. And I really think there do a, a round of cheers for hanging in there for the last 10 months when they knew the job was coming to an end.
Well, Mr. Richter, thank you. And please take the commission's appreciation back to the two employees. And Mr. Kraft's here, of course, but, and I think we need to write a letter of thanks.
Oh, that would, I'm sure that would be appreciated.
Yes.
They'll put it, they'll put it in their resume.
Share, share with, how much money were we talking about each month?
Each month, that program brings about $90,000 a month into Greenbrier County. Some of that goes to Monroe and some to Pocahontas, but the lion's share, I'm gonna just throw out a number of 75% or 80 probably goes to Greenbrier County. Bill shaking his head, yes. So it basically is a Greenbrier County program. Now, interestingly enough, one of your fellow commissioners from Monroe County has already written a letter to Raleigh County Housing Authority, wanting to make sure that his share doesn't decline. And probably, we should do the same in Greenbrier County.
Okay.
Just to stay on it. It's, it's kind of like duck, water off a duck's back. But each year, they have to put together a plan of how they're going to service their geographic area. And we need to be kind of voiceful about making sure that they, that we get the service we think we deserve.
Get our share.
Yeah. And probably, I'm not trying to sign Sarah up for that responsibility, but I think Shane is probably a good point person to help with that as that process rolls around each year, where we can comment on their plan, their administrative plan.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for attending. Okay.
Rick, do you want your pen?
Yeah.
Maybe?
That may be an empty. That is a Greenbrier County Housing Authority...
Prosecutor's office.
Well, that's kind of why I figured you might want to hold it.
Hi, I'm Brian Aloys from U.S. Senator Joe Manion. He's gonna be my call today.
Just for the press's benefit, Mr. Richter has kept us briefed as this process has gone along. And I thought we definitely needed to get it where the public knows about this transition. There shouldn't, the recipients really should not see any change. But the public need to be aware that the administration is changing though, from Greenbrier County to Raleigh County.
What is Rick's position with, with the housing authority? Is he still chairman of the board?
He's their accountant. He's also on the board, is he not?
He's a board member. Ms. Neely did their financial and accounting work, though. She's, he said it.
Well, he, he does a lot of the accounting work also, yes. She maybe certifies his work or something.
That might be it.
Mr. Prosecutor.
I was gonna say, your public comment, you do not have any, if you want to note that.
Let's skip right over it, didn't we?
Yeah.
You're next.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good seeing you.
Good to see you all. I have back-to-back items on the agenda. The first one would be the legal assistance position. As you know, had a vacancy created. It was July 1, I think, is when that vacancy was actually created. We've gone through an extensive interview process, and I have presented to you for your approval the name of Katrina Neal, together with her resume. And would also advise you that an appropriate background check has been completed, completed successfully. And we're very pleased with her prospects. We think she'll be a fine addition to the office. And I would ask for your approval for that hire on that vacancy. She is prepared to begin on Wednesday, August 1.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Vai before you make a motion? A motion then?
I move that we approve the request for the hire of Karina Neal in the prosecutor's office.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the investigator position, which, this is my first time to publicly acknowledge my appreciation to the commission for considering this position for prosecutor's office. Not only did you consider it, you approved it, and you have done a very good thing for a law enforcement in this county and for the citizens of this county. And I think the individual I've selected will prove me right on that. And I wanted to publicly express my appreciation for the foresight. The commission had to see the value of this position. And the proof, I think, will be in the pudding. Not until after the first of the year, but it'll be there. So with respect to this position, I would respectfully request that the commission approve the decision I have made to present to you the name of Vincent S. Deeds for this position. The position, because of the way we structured it, as the commission is aware, the position will not become operable, so to speak, or the employment will not begin until January 1. I had several highly qualified applicants for this position. I'm confident that we've made a selection that will do an extraordinary job. He's not yet retired from his current position, which is Lieutenant Colonel of the State Police. And he's got several more months that he's gotta finish there for his retirement to become effective. So the January start date actually works out pretty well for everyone. So I would request that you consider his approval as well.
Okay. I would take the honor of giving you permission to hire Mr. Deeds and put that in the form of a motion. Is there any discussion? I've known Vince for several years. And the reason we weren't able to, we weren't able to fund this position for a whole year is because we didn't have the funds.
Understood that.
And, and so the, the hiring won't take place until January 1, but, or his work won't start until then.
That's correct.
But certainly, we want, want to get him on tap to come here. And, and I look forward to seeing him working for you.
I do too, very much.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I have one incidental request, and I think the commission is the body that has to approve this. If I need to go somewhere else, tell me. Vince being Vince, wants to come around some when he is able to kind of get his feet wet. I told him I couldn't pay him for it, and that was fine with him. Just occasionally, he wants to come around and look at some of our files and kind of get going. I was not expecting that, but I told him I wasn't gonna turn him down on that offer either, to come in and do that. And, and all that's fine, except would the commission consider requests that I would make now for me to get a pass key made for him? He is currently Lieutenant Colonel of the State Police. I don't think there's a, any breach of security. Many of the law enforcement, local law enforcement officers have keys anyway. If, if that's not an undue request, I would like to go ahead and, so he can, you know, come in, employee entrances and so forth. And if, if that's not too much to ask, I would appreciate if the commission would consider that request as well.
Have you run that by the chief judge?
No, sir, but I will.
It actually goes in front of the sheriff.
Is the sheriff the one that makes that decision?
Sheriff's in charge of security.
I can get the sheriff's approval for this.
I mean, the sheriff is in charge of security at the building, and that's who's in charge of security.
Okay. I wasn't sure who authorized that, but if...
Anna actually does them. But honestly, if he tries his card, it might already work.
The one Vince has now?
Yeah. And the only reason I'm saying that is because several years ago, we did the whole thing with the old school and the other public schools. So their cards are interchangeable at different places. The only door that would be an issue is your door.
Okay.
Mine at the school would not work this down here. It'd be...
But that came afterwards.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I wasn't sure who did that. I, maybe I'm asking the wrong people for the authorization. I'll go to the sheriff with it.
I'd make the judge aware of it, though.
I will. I'll tell, I'll tell the judge, and I'm, I'm just as certain as I can be that neither the sheriff nor the chief judge will have any issue with...
We don't have any issues, do we? No, not at all.
Just for the person. What exactly, you don't have to get deep enough to get, but what exactly is Mr. Deeds' job type? Well, not his job type, but his job...
His description? Sure, yeah. What, what's, it's, it's, I don't know if I would call it a trend or not. There are several other counties that have done it, counties similar to our size or bigger. The investigator position in the prosecutor's office is going to be a investigation coordinator and a point of instruction and guidance, as well as organization between law enforcement and the prosecutor's office. Calling him an investigator is maybe not exactly the right word. I used it because that's what every other county seems to be using. He's not going to be out on the street doing literally investigations. We have far too many competent law enforcement officers in all departments to add to the investigative work. This is going to be a position where those investigations will be managed by him at arms length, coordinating them, helping in the presentation to grand juries, helping in development of the complex cases. And in this particular instance, everybody in this room probably knows Vince. He has done extraordinary investigative work throughout his career. I wouldn't even know how many homicides and rapes and very serious cases. And has an extraordinary ability to formulate investigations, to put them together, and frankly, to assist law enforcement in questions and guidance in, in terms of fulfilling investigative requirements. So it's, it, I would call it, even though I'm calling it an investigator, a case coordinator would probably be a more appropriate description. And I don't know, I'm gonna say six or eight counties in the state have gotten on board with this, maybe as many as 10. I don't have an actual head count, but our caseload has got to the point, and I know the commission saw this in our budget meetings, that we are now also at that point where other counties have been for some time, like Raleigh, for example, and Mongolia, Canawha, certainly the larger ones. And we're kind of getting in step with, with those counties with this type of position. And so it, it'll be a very important position for me from standpoint. I've got somebody, I've, you know, especially with the person that we have selected. I've got somebody that I can absolutely rely on to be able to make judgment calls on investigative decisions when I may not necessarily be available at any moment in time to do that. You know, we're in court a lot, and a lot of questions come up. And Colonel Deets or Lieutenant Colonel Deets is extraordinarily qualified to make investigative decisions on cases. And I look forward to it. I think everybody's gonna be pleased with this. I am entirely confident of that. What I would like to see happen, some of this terminology may be foreign to some folk. Well, not, they won't beat anybody in here. What I would like to see happen is too many times, our, our caseload gets boxed up to coordinate with the grand juries. We have three grand juries. We've got these cases, and they pile up, and they pile up, and they pile up, and they pile up. And then you finally get a grand juror, and you do them. And then they start piling up and piling up and piling up because you're, you're really a little helpless to do anything about it until your next grand jury rolls around. Well, I think one of the things we're gonna see here... Well, I think one of the things we're going to see here is we're going to see more of a year-round, continuous flow of case resolutions, because we have mechanisms, as long as you have the resources. We have mechanisms by which we can resolve cases without necessarily waiting for the next grand jury. But that's a, that's a resource thing, that's a time thing, that's a person power thing. This position, in fact, Vince and I talked just the other day, and he is excited about this because he sees the value of it, as I do. If I've got somebody working these cases from our end of it, between the grand juries, then you're going to see a lot of case resolutions that can happen in real time continuously. You'll probably see smaller grand jury numbers. You know, you probably won't see 75, 80 indictments. You hopefully are going to end up seeing 35 or 40 maybe, because, and that doesn't mean there's less cases, it means they're getting resolved, you know, in real time, much quicker, much more efficiently. I believe that'll be one of the results of this. I truly do.
You have other questions? All right.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Number three, open the bids for the parking lot upgrades in consideration to hire.
There's two. We received two of them. I put that up to bid, and I actually spoke to three separate contractors, but only two of them presented.
We'll open these, and we'll read the figures, and then we'll send them to our engineering firm, Teradon. Make sure that they, make sure we're comparing apples to apples. And then probably, at the next meeting, we can announce if we're going to award it. That didn't sound good. Groaning on the right.
It's quite the job, too. You have to think it's going to be adding some drainage, extending the parking lot, striping it, closing up an entryway, and changing it. I mean, there's a lot of, of changes.
We have one from All Construction. It's like all their paperwork is in there. Engineering company, figure that out. The total price, base bid is $207,727.47. Then it says alternate, alternate line 19, which is repair slip with gigions. With fabric, hot rock, and topsoil without the gigions. Would drop the price from $12,277.79 to $5,400, which would give us about a $7,000 savings from the, the bringers down to around $2,000. Well, do the math there real quick, because this is close. Subtract that if you don't mind. Well, we're not going to make, well, I guess we could make a little.
Well, Teradon will have to decide whether that could be substituted.
But, again, I'm not sure that we're going to answer. But we're going to announce these numbers to the President.
I'm sure the employees would like this, because I hear all the time about how the parking lot will eat vehicles. I hear it at least once a week. Of course, when Commissioner Hannah came on to the Commission, him and his sons used their own time to try to pave, patch holes.
My hole's still good. Just all the ones around it.
$202,000, if we accept the alternate, it would be $202,327.47.
That was still higher.
And I have one from Land's Construction for a total price of $201,822.79. But now that line 19 is, it still is requested, so. Please guys give an alternate, those bid as presented, so.
So really, you're saying the 2007 and 2001 are comparable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless there's.
Right. So if all checks out, most likely, it will go with the low one.
I would recommend that we, if our engineering company says that everything is correct with the bid, that we accept the fee of completion.
Okay, that's motion? Okay, any discussion?
That's the apparent logo there. That we go apparent logo, which was Land's Construction.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Number four, consider signing service agreement with Advanced Communications.
That's the company that we use for our phone services. They, this contract or this agreement, service agreement, covers the phones. If we have to change the phones out, if they've come down and work, it gives us a discounted price and some of the support for them. That's the same price we've had since I've been here, so they haven't increased it, so that's a good thing.
From June 29th?
It's this.
2018 through December 29th of 2019.
I need to make sure that that's correct, because it should be for the year. She might not have changed that. Because I know one time we did a, well, at one time, we did them for six months at a time. So she's put a year and a half, so I need to check her dates on that. I didn't even notice until just now. So if you want to postpone it, we can.
I would say December 29th, 2018, I would get.
I think she's supposed to be July, or whatever, or June, June 29th of 2019. So it's supposed to go a whole year.
I'd say we better lay this on the table. Lay it aside and get that figured out, because.
I just noticed it when you said that.
I don't know what the $3,950 is covering, whether it's a year and a half, or. And you'll have a different commission start January 1st also.
Do you move to table?
Yes. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. This item will be tabled. Consider you hired to 911 Center to fill a vacancy. Donna?
We had Josh Dolls resign, full-time employee. He went to work for Lewisburg PD. And we are looking for approval to rehire Angie Gwen. She left in November, went to work for the State Police, and has requested to come back. She would come back to us fully trained and ready to go.
So she's not got to be certified or anything?
Yes. Doesn't have to be trained or anything. I would.
Her certification?
Her certifications and everything are still up to date, yes.
Can you share with us why she left?
With the State Police?
Left, well.
Why she left originally? I really don't know. I, I think it was probably just.
She left under good terms?
Oh, yes.
Gave two weeks' notice?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you don't know what happened with the State Police?
She told me there was a scheduling conflict that just didn't work for her.
Does she know what her schedule's going to be at the 911 Center? She's okay with that?
Yeah.
Motion?
I think that we approve the rehire of Angela Gwen to the 911 Center, especially with the fact that she's already training with directed work filled positions.
Yeah.
I assume the background check is still in effect, but.
I've done another one, but yeah, it was okay.
Okay. It's been moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number six, consider board appointments and reappointments. Does, does anyone have? Okay, so we moved the table to the next meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Do, do you want to share which ones we need some folks on and?
Well, I'm still waiting. Farmland, they've got some stuff. Now, they usually try to help us come up with the names after they've gone through.
Farm Preservation needs two.
I'm not sure how many. Arts and Rec, we will have to look at those.
We've got one vacancy on Arts and Rec, and we've got two's term has expired.
Yes.
So we could possibly need three people there.
Let's see, Airport, when they have advertised for theirs, and that one will be coming, I guess, forthwith?
I think they're going to, although I'm on the Airport Authority, I'm not part of their selection process for obvious reasons. And I think they're going to maybe put my lead in favor, too, as they give her more interest.
Of course, that one.
That's where vacancy on the Airport Authority.
Of course, that one requires some certain restrictions by state code. And so that has to be looked at. Your planning commission?
That cannot. The law says that no more than two people of the same political party can be on that Airport Authority. And the county commissioner, the county commissions represented does not count. So the lady that retired was a Republican. So it would require that that person not be a Democrat. Be independent, Republican, Mountain, whatever.
Something other than Democrat.
Yeah, and I hate passing up a straight line like that. I was going to, while we're on camera, but.
I'm, I'm glad you shared that, because over the years I've been here, the Airport Authority is the one that seems to be the most desirable to, or more people expressed interest in the Airport Authority than any of the other volunteer positions that we have. And so, if they're going to advertise that again, I wasn't aware of that. And I guess the press wasn't either. So it's good that we got that out, and if that, they can watch for that advertisement, or they can go ahead and submit a application perhaps. Contact.
And contact the Airport, Airport Manager. We have three, I understand, there are three eligible applicants right now.
Okay. Any others that you all want to mention? The others that I mentioned, the others I mentioned, they can send their resume or their letter of interest to Kelly, and, and she'll get those to us.
So if they, if they just want to check into the office at any time and, and express any interest to any of our boards, just let us know.
Yes.
I'll pass the information along to the Commission.
Certainly, we want to give everybody an opportunity to be considered. Okay, anything else to come before the county commission? Public comment?
There are none. You might recognize Brian's here, from Senator Manchin's office.
Aloys?
Aloys, yeah.
Okay, I'm never sure of that name. I don't use it, except when you're around, is probably the reason.
Yeah, that's okay.
How are you, the CV?
Very good. I appreciate you having me. I know the Senator's planning on coming down for the state fair, and when I know the, the date, I'll be sure to let you guys know.
Okay, Brian is representing Senator Manchin's office. And he's, he's always available for us when we need help from the Senate, when we get into trouble in that territory.
No trouble.
Anything else? Any announcements? Fair's coming up. Our next meeting will be during the fair.
Given that the, we have the courtroom, it'll be the 14th at 10:00 down here, so it should be in here.
Okay, anything else? Anything you want to share with us? Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, meeting, motion passed, meeting adjourned.